Board of County Commissioners, now in session. We'll begin with prayer, Father. About the prayers, Commissioner Jones, you lead us in prayer, please.
Certainly. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for this day that you've given unto us. We thank you for this time you've given us here together. Father, we ask you today for discretion, wisdom, and understanding. God, we ask you, Lord, to help us in our decision-making today. Not just about today, not just about the things that are happening now, but about every day that you will give the citizens of Franklin County. Help us to be good stewards of that in Christ's name.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and a sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the general will be approval of amendments. That way. Well, motion on the floor by Commissioner Massey, second by Commissioner Sanders. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next will be payment of county bills.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Massey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries also. Next one, Department Director's report, be Mr. Howard Nevers, Superintendent of Public Work.
Good morning, Commissioners, how y'all doing?
Good morning.
Got a couple items as we still continue on fixing shoulders and intersections of, you know, throughout the county. And holidays is coming up, which we will be off on. The holidays would be off Thursday, Monday, and Tuesday of next week.
And what days will you be off on New Year's?
Monday.
Monday.
Yes, ma'am.
So you'll be off Friday, Saturday?
We'll come back at Wednesday and Thursday, we'll be off, you know, that following Monday.
Okay.
Anything else from the Commissioners, from Mr. Howard?
No, I don't know whether I'm gonna be over there tomorrow or not.
Okay.
Just wanna wish you a very Merry Christmas, and thank you for all you do.
Wish y'all Merry Christmas too, and a Happy New Year, so.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, Mr. Howard, from the Board? Thank you, Howard. Next will be Mr. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Fonda.
A few items here this morning. First, with Girl Scouts of Florida Panhandle. Currently, there are no Girl Scout troops in Franklin County. Franklin County Parks and Recreation would like to partnership with Girl Scouts of Florida Panhandle to help from one within our community. Program is designed to help young girls in decision-making, people skills, and goal-setting, while having fun and making lifelong memories. Membership for volunteers and girls is $25 each. Attach us a flyer and additional contact information for Ms. Kiana Floyd. She's the recruitment and outreach specialist. Just something for the Board, trying to gain some stuff in under Parks and Rec, you know, just gonna help the Girl Scouts out a little bit. They may need help with uniforms or something like that, so just wanna help 'em out. The next item is Go Mobile Gymnastics. Ms. Amy Selison is in conjunction with the Parks and Rec Department, will provide an enrichment gymnastic program for children of Franklin County. Classes are 35 minutes long for both boys and girls ages three to 10 years old. Registration will begin in January, and the registration fee is $60 per child. Attach this registration form and additional information about the Go Mobile Gymnastic Program. What we have here is that we, Ms. Amy, I asked her to come too. It's just for the gymnastic, a lot of people been saying we need gymnastics in the county, and just so happened Ms. Amy contacted me, and what she was wanting to know is she could use the county facilities, the armory and the ball fields, you know, tennis court. So with that being said, I would like for the Board to authorize Mr. Schuler to look into the liability issues of this here, if that's fine, and maybe Ms. Amy could speak on it a little bit more.
That's fine. I make a motion for Mr. Schuler to look into it.
Can we get Ms. Amy to speak a little bit on it?
Good morning, and thank you for your time. My name is Amy Selison, and I am the owner of Go Mobile Gymnastics LLC. I have been in gymnastics myself since I was about 10, and I started coaching when I was about 20. And I've coached in different facilities in Michigan and Chicago, and I was the director of a gymnastics program in Chicago as well. And we had just moved here recently. My husband is a schoolteacher at Franklin County Schools. And moving here, I realized that there was a need for gymnastics, and there was no closed gymnastics program. So I started Go Mobile Gymnastics, which is a mobile gymnastics facility where I can set up and tear down my equipment within a half an hour. And I have bars, beams, mats, a small little trampoline and inflatable. And I would set it up. Each class is 35 minutes, and I would have up to seven students in each class. The classes would consist of a warm-up, a cool-down, fun games, and obviously gymnastics training as well on all the equipment. The age range is from three to 10. I have classes for children, for parent-to-night classes, so parents could come in with their child. And then I have elementary and a recreational program too, ranging from three to 10.
Let me ask you a question. Are you for profit, or are you gonna charge?
I'm for profit, and the registration fee for the kids would be $60 for seven-week sessions, each meeting one time a week, and at 35 minutes per.
Commissioners, they're following along with your lead, Commissioner Sanders. If it's for profit, well, nonprofit, it doesn't matter. You only have two ways that the armory could be rented at the moment. That's a daily fee of $250 plus taxes, and it's a weekend fee of $600 plus taxes. I would say what you would need to consider is, along with the motion that's probably on the floor to amend it, is do you guys, does the Board want to consider maybe some hourly fee with some restrictions that, you know, for two or three hours, as long it's Parks and Recs related? Because, I guess what I'm trying to tell you, I have no option here to, you know, to allow her to do the gym in the armory if that's where she so chooses. So just, you know, thinking down the road, if that's gonna be the spot, we gotta figures. You guys gotta give me an option, basically, is what I'm asking.
And it's the general rule, I may be wrong, but it's the general rule that we don't have for profit, that it's, what the county works with is more nonprofits and, you know, stuff like that. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with an attorney looking at a contract and all, but at the same time, I don't want the Board to be in hot water with the public for doing a for-profit versus a nonprofit, because then you're gonna have, you're gonna open up the door for that, and I don't mean no harm, because I'm all for gymnastics, all for it. But I'm concerned with what the President will say. You see what I'm saying?
I agree, as the Board knows and as the public knows, I wanna treat everybody the same. I'm gonna treat everybody the same. So if we make exceptions for the gymnastics, and me too, I'm all about it, I got a young grandchild that's real good in gymnastics. But when we did this armory and started rebuilding the armory and designated the convention center, we said we would make no, you know, we've had to turn down people that wanted to have a funeral there. We've had to turn down churches that wanted to have stuff there, which are all nonprofit. So when you crack this door open, then everybody, or my vote, is gonna be treated equally. Now we're getting into a big to-do about who's gonna use the armory and who can use it for free and who can't. And then that's gonna put staff in a bad position, because the people that wanna rent it goes to staff. And there's a church that's having something there pretty soon for the two, recognizing their pastor and their long years of service. They're being charged $250 to use that thing for one day. So when you start making exceptions, the exceptions apply to everybody in the general public. That's the issue that I got, because when we first started this, I made the Board aware, and the Board voted to not make those exceptions, because once we make one exception, if they come before this Board, I'm gonna vote to make an exception for the next person, because I feel like everybody should be treated equally and fairly. That's what we have to do as a government. You can't discriminate, whether it's for kids, whether it's somebody for a funeral. We have policy and procedures in place, and that's the way we set this up. I'm only one vote, but I will tell you now that I will not vote for it. It is up to the Board. I don't run the Board. There's four other members on this Board, but I know how we set it up and why we did it that way. There's air conditioning there, that we done an energy audit and determined the fees that we are now charging because of these big air conditioners that we put in that convention center. I would like to see you try to find another place other than the armor. I just don't think we're gonna have to be able to make exceptions for one thing and not make exceptions for everybody else. So that's my opinion on it. I think it's a good program. Like I said, my granddaughter will probably be enrolled in one of these classes. And I may catch the devil from my wife for saying what I'm saying, but that's the way I feel about it. And I have to make you aware of that.
But it has nothing to do with the program that she's involved in?
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
The options that the Board has, and often the rental of the armor, you know.
And I agree with the Chairman. It took us a long time to get the plan for the armory as far as payment and stuff like this, and one of the issues was, we brought it to the table, just like the Chairman said, and we said, okay, I want you, we want you to understand, there's not gonna be no exception for anyone. And that's the way we.
Even we have one guy come to us, and he served in that armory for 40 years, Mr. Anthony Toronto, and he was having a 50th wedding anniversary. He still had to pay. He says, I've been here 50 years, I've been in this community my whole life. The policy is the policy, and we had to stick by that policy, and he had to pay to rent the thing to have his 50-year anniversary. I mean, and there's numerous other examples that I won't put out there in public, but people come into my office, want me to try to help make arrangements and make exceptions, and I just can't do that for one group. If we're gonna make exceptions, then there's gonna be exceptions for a lot of different things, from your churches to full age to on and on and on and on, and we just don't do that, we've never done that. But I do support the program.
You ain't got another building?
No other building, Commissioner, but we could use the Concombrets, baseball, football.
I don't have a problem with that. That's totally different as far as using the parks in our outdoor arenas, other than the liability and, you know, because gymnastics, you sprain a wrist, you break an arm. Where does that put the county? And I think that's in the motion to have the Attorney look at that kind of stuff. You may have to provide the insurance, or it may come under the county umbrella, I don't know. That's up for the Attorney, but we only have a motion for that. We need a second to send that to the Attorney. We now have a second by Commissioner Jones. But I want you to understand, we do, I do support the program, and I think the Board supports the program. It's just a matter of, second precedence, as Commissioner Sanders said, and I agree that we probably are, because I'm gonna treat everybody fair and equitable, from gymnastics to full age to somebody.
Girl Scout, everything.
Right, and on and on and on and on.
Yeah.
And there are other public entities, private entities out there that have dancing classes and other things. Well, what if they come to us and wanna do their dance classes now in the army and not rebuild it? Which my daughter, granddaughter participates in that also. So I just see it snowballing, and no way to defend one and not allow the other to have the same access. We do have a motion and a second on the floor on this issue, to have the Attorney look at it. Any further discussion?
Commissioner, I've got something. Fonda, it might be, I mean, I don't know, it's hard to speak for somebody.
Okay.
But I would think that the way they've already got everything set up at the matchbox with public-private partnerships, that might be a really good spot.
Yeah, it might be, Ellen. That would be a good idea.
They've completely redone that facilities. The only thing I think they've got left to do is the roof.
Okay.
And that was, she told me about a year ago, that was $80,000 they were doing, and last year they got $50,000 from the state legislature, so they're close to having that whole thing redone, and it'd be a spot that's not going anywhere.
Right.
It'd be very stable, and I think it'd be very beneficial.
Okay.
I'm gonna look into that.
Appreciate it.
Any other discussion before we take a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Continue on, Mr. Davis.
Next item is Waste Management Disposal Service Agreement. We have Mr. Ronnie Bell, manager with Waste Management, here today with the disposal agreement. I actually had an agreement here in front of me, but we need the Chairman's signature, so I'm asking for Board approval to authorize the Chairman's signature. Mr. Schuler looked over this.
This is for the fee that they'll be charging us for the transfer station taking the stuff up to Spring Hill?
Yes.
Is that what we're talking about, the fee schedule?
Yes.
And how much is it still?
It's 17.
Okay, it's still at $17.
Yeah.
Pleasure to the Board.
I'm gonna say if the Attorney has, you know, put his rubber stamp on it and said it's okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and approve this.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
I've got some discussion. Mr. Bell, come to the podium if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanna thank you for years of working with you, and thank you, I know you're not gonna be around no more.
Where we at from?
But you're still my friend, and, and.
Yeah, true.
Y'all have done us real good in Franklin County as far as waste management, and we appreciate it.
Commissioner, I'm not going anywhere, this is a five-year contract.
I know, but you won't be around. You won't be around as frequently as what you have been.
But if you name me?
But I got your telephone.
That's exactly, if you name me, you call me.
I got your telephone.
But we appreciate it, and it's been a joy to work with your staff, except for Mr. Schuler.
Well, he gets told that all the time.
I wanna compliment you. I think I said this one time before to you on the previous contract, I don't want you paying, don't care, but he does you a fine job. Fonda does too, but Mr. Schuler holds our feet to the fire. I have never, two and a half years I've been Waste Management, it's never took me this long to get a contract completed. But Mr. Schuler was adamant that this was the way it was gonna be done, and this was gonna be in it, and of course, we'd argue back and forth, our attorney and him, and I'm in the middle, and a lot of you know what I used to do for a living, so, you know, I sort of follow both ways, and, but Mr. Schuler and Mr. Davis have done y'all a fine job, and we appreciate you.
Well, you know, it's like, you've been in county government, you know, because that's where I first met you many years ago, and the Attorney's job is to protect the Board at all costs.
Exactly.
When you protect the Board, you protect the people. And so that's his job, and he does it well.
Oh, they both do.
And we get a lot of things like that about him.
But thank y'all very much.
Hey, Chris. Then you on, Mr. Davis.
Next item is Restructure of Current Employee and Request for New Hire Position.
We need, excuse me.
At our 10-17 Board Meeting, Commissioner.
We need to vote.
Okay, we do have a motion, we do have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Continue on.
Okay, next item is Restructure of Current Employee and Request for New Hire. At the October 17 Board Meeting, Commissioners gave instructions to provide more department restructuring information of current employees. Provided is as recommended, organizational chart for all current departments under my direct supervision. Each department has grown tremendously with additional duties and responsibility. Parks and Recreation has added additional restroom, the Armory Fire Watch, and the Beach Warning Flags. Animal Control has added the roadside enforcement of new litter ordinance with no additional staff, and Solid Waste and Recycling Department has added the Household Waste Transfer Station. These restructuring changes would be better for the departments and residents of Franklin County. I'm asking, I'm requesting Board's approval to fill the vacant position that is currently allocated in my budget, and I would like to hire one new entry-level employee to run the scale at the starting pay of $25,000. I would also like to restructure the current scale operator position to administrative assistant to do more administrative duties.
Can I comment?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You remember a few years ago, we had a study done about organization charts and stuff, and whose job was what? This Board really needs to look at that and approve something, because if they did, this wouldn't have to come up. It would be an automatic thing. They would know where to go, you know, how to bump it up, they would know what the pay was gonna be. And I think, you know, in the new year, the Board really needs to seriously look at the wage and earning, the study that we did, you know, the promotion study and all that we did, and we need to really look at, see if we need to go there. I don't have no problem with what Mr. Fonda wants to do, because he knows how to best run his department.
I agree. And as more duties come up, and Fonda didn't really have an assistant hired after he took over this, he used to work under Mr. Van Johnson, and Van stayed at the office and took care of a lot of the bookwork, and Fonda was in the field. Now Fonda's trying to stay in the field, and he doesn't have a secretary to keep up with all this bookwork. So I agree with the restructuring of it, and it's pleasure of the Board.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is Construction-Demolition Tipping Fee Increase. The Board, the last Board, last Board Meeting told me to come back, so my recommendation that we, with the added expense of the new transfer station on October 1st, the construction and demolition tipping fees need to be increased. Motion to increase construction, demolition tipping fees from $40 a ton to $60 a ton to help offset the expense of the transfer station.
Pleasure to the Board.
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion?
Just to reiterate, this is to take care of, but since we've got the cost back on us to run the transfer station, since Waste Management, Waste Management's not gonna do it anymore, this is what we're gonna have to do to make up for the money.
Some have to advertise.
I have something to, Mr. Chairman. To clarify, now, this is also, didn't we have some discussion before that Mr. Davis said it was kinda thought we actually had people coming out of county to run C and D because it was so cheap?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. Yes. Mr. Pierce just brought it to my attention, that it's the effective date of the, you know, the increase of the tipping fee, we have to run it in the paper. So we at least do that.
Was that two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Well, this time of year, though, so the paper, you know, I don't know if they produce, they have a year in summer, they actually print ahead of time, so I'm not sure what their publishing schedule is. So maybe January 1, or maybe after January 15. I'm not sure when you get your two weeks out.
Okay, so what February would be good.
That's what I was thinking. If the Board, if the Board members would amend their motion and their second, to reflect the effective date will be February 1.
Okay.
Which gives them a whole month to do advertisement.
I'll amend my motion.
The motion and the second has been amended, the effective date will be February 1.
Yeah, February 1.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, just the holiday schedule, we will work a half crew on Friday, and then a half a day on Wednesday, and just take that money out for New Year. That way we won't shut down from Friday to Wednesday. Around half a crew split, shift up for that third day that we reserve.
Anything else from Mr. Fonda?
Just wish him a happy Merry, very Merry Christmas.
I have a question. Mr. Fonda, I need to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
And it might have even been Mr. Howard. Sorry, I'll get it straight eventually. I think we need to update some of the verbiage on the sign at the pavilion.
Okay.
In East Point. To, you can't put the whole ordinance on the sign, but I think there's some things that are left out. I'd like to get it with you sometime and go over that, because I think the general public just doesn't understand how the land was purchased, you know, a public trust land.
Okay.
So we really can't allow commercial venture there, that's not the county's job or liability, you know, to have a place for commercial seafood to be at. They can load and unload there, but they can't leave the boats there, and we're running a problem with it.
Right.
But I wanna give something up there, because there is something in our ordinance for enforcement. The sheriff hadn't taken it that far yet, but I feel if we change the verbiage, it would give him the teeth he needs.
Okay.
To help enforce it.
Provide more clarity.
Yeah, provide more clarity, so I'm not, so we're not constantly calling and talking about it, you know what I mean?
Right.
Just trying to make it better for everybody. We've had several instances where we had people that are elderly, that are out on the boat with a loved one, and they try to come up to either the dock there at the pavilion or the floating dock there at the boat ramp, and there's already three or four boats tied around it that can't get off properly. You know, it's already hard enough as it is when kids be able to get on the boat and off the dock, and just trying to make, help out everybody.
Okay. Anything else from Mr. Davis?
One more thing. Since Ms. Link is gonna be the administrative assistant now, one of her duties would be to promote Franklin County Parks. I would like for her to look into tournaments in Franklin County again.
Actually, she discussed with me a little bit that Mr. Jeff Fairclough out of Mirana called and wanted to know if we would be interested in being.
Good.
State again, so.
That's good. And also, in the new year, I would like to look at, and that would be part of your plan too, along with Michael, is to look at how we can expand Kendrick Park into a more friendly user park, with more things to do. And some of the stuff needs to be upgraded out there. I was quite surprised, because I thought it looked pretty. The Buck O'Neil monument that we have in honor of Mr. Buck O'Neil, somebody concreted over and took flowers out of it. So now it's concrete over, you can't plant flowers in there. And that was designed to have the flowers and make it look pretty and all. So I was concerned that no one discussed that with me about, you know, because that's the way we designed it, the memorial.
Yeah, what happened there, Commissioner, we was getting a lot of complaints about the kids just going and throwing rocks, and I apologize, and didn't mention it to you.
Yeah.
And just trying to please everybody, and they suggested that we.
It would look prettier if you could put some brick pavers over it, though.
Okay.
And not just have the plain concrete.
Will do.
But do that, but look in the future and see what we can do out there to expand, because as you all remember, it is 90 acres out there.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're only partly utilizing that complex. We need to utilize, utilize. My, my, my vision, one of my visions for that was to have grandstands to where we could have at one day in time in the future, World Series here, and, and everything. So you've got the land there to do it in. You know, anything to bring people into our county and showcase what we have in our county.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments from Mr. Fonda, David?
I have a couple.
I ain't gonna waste deal.
Mr. Fonda, you haven't asked for it, but I'll go ahead and do it publicly, whenever y'all do any tournaments or anything, I volunteer.
Okay.
I'll help keep books, whatever. That'd be consistent, what I've always done.
All right.
I'd be glad to help.
I appreciate it.
Just let me know.
One other quick thing, I know I'm having him report, Mr. William Keywood, Animal Control, mentioned to me that he may be retiring in March, so, but the more I find out, I come back to the Board to it.
Okay.
Any other comments from Mr. Davis?
Just one more. I know you've had some family issues, and.
Yes, ma'am.
Our prayers have been with your family and.
Thank you very much.
And everything.
Thank you.
And like I said, wish you Merry Christmas.
Same to you.
Any other comments from Mr. Davis? I think Mr. Marone has one item on his report.
I have a couple. Item number six on my report, I was notified by Weems staff that it's become necessary to look for a new location to house the ambulance service in the eastern end of the county. Weems staff asked about the old Caravelle Annex location, we also know it as the old FDOT yard. Currently, that location is used by Parks and Rec for storage and for restroom facilities. Craig Gibson and I, Craig Gibson of Weems, and I met at the location on Wednesday, December Craig Gibson and I, Craig Gibson of Weems, and I met at the location on Wednesday, December 13th, so that he can determine if the location would meet their needs. Based on his first assessment, Mr. Gibson stated that with some small renovation projects, that location would be good to house the ambulance service. There will be enough space to co-locate with Parks and Rec, and Weems will be responsible for all the utilities, with the exception of that line that you guys use, punch card, for the time clock, I'm sorry. Board action to allow Weems to use this location to house the ambulance service.
Before we take a vote on this, I want to talk about it a little bit, Mr. Chairman, thank you for letting me talk. This area is, just before we get to Island View Park, is a bad area because of the curves. We have one blinking yellow light out there, if this does happen, we need to contact FDOT and make them put two blinking lights out there on the pole to make sure that when the ambulance has come out, that people know that there's an ambulance coming in and out. And so, I mean, it's a safety factor. I don't see no problem with this, they approached me months ago, and they said let them think it out and everything, and then I told them to approach you, Michael, and Fonda, but I don't have no problem with this, board, and I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this. Contingent on Michael and the attorney and everybody working everything out, and the monies and all.
Well, it's not gonna hurt Parks and Rec none, okay, because they can still use it, don't have to drive back and forth, make double trips, and give shop.
Yeah, it won't affect them, it is, yeah. We're gonna switch the equipment from one room to the other, we go, the time clock stays where it is, and there are two bathrooms, so they can still use one if the other one is occupied.
Okay.
Okay.
And make that clear that they will be having Parks and Recs coming in there.
Yes, clear.
Okay.
We have, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? One point of emphasis, Mike, is as you travel across the state, you'll see signage that says fire truck, so make sure we get the appropriate signage along with the light that states that this is an ambulance, so people are aware, you know, pay attention when the ambulance is coming out on the road in an emergency situation, so proper signage along with the light would be the proper thing to do there.
Mr. Gibson, Craig, and I talked about that already, what it is, it's a trip light, you set off it when they're leaving, and it starts blinking really fast to let people know that it's coming out.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good.
So we do have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
All right, item number nine, Commissioners. Commissioner Jones asked that I research the hiring and the pay history for the mechanics out of the county's maintenance garage. Based on information from the finance office, both Mr. Rusty Putnall and Mrs. Leonard Brandon both received twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty dollars as their starting pay as mechanics in 2002. Mr. Putnall was promoted from a county-based salary position, which was sixteen thousand nine fifty-two, and Mr. Brandon was hired as a mechanic. In 2013, Mr. Brandon suffered a work-related injury, and Mr. Jonathan Kelly was asked to temporarily fill that position and was given a four thousand one hundred and fifty dollar increase. Mr. Brandon retired without returning to work, and Mr. Kelly's position became permanent, with no further discussion about changes to his salary. Be taken into consideration the cost of living increases between Mr. Putnall's higher date and Mr. Kelly's higher date, that's the ones that the boards approved at budget. Mr. Brandon's salary, when he retired in 2013, which was thirty-six thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars, Mr. Kelly's years of service and the added responsibility of maintaining the transfer station, an increase of two thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars would be a fair amount to get his wages in line with the other mechanic, who's, I'm sorry, whose salary the other mechanic is now six thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars more than Mr. Kelly's salary. Board discussion and our action.
Giving, giving him twenty-nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars would still not be as much as Mr. Putnall.
No, sir.
But Mr. Putnall has been there longer.
And he started back.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, I just want to make the distinction there of why it's not being brought up evenly, because the other mechanic has more years experience.
Oh, yeah, more years, yes, sir.
My question, my question is, is he performing what you need him to perform, Fonda, does he, how's he doing in his job?
Yes, doing an outstanding job. I mean, I wish it could be more, to be honest with you, I meant for the job he's doing, you know, some time ago, I brought this up, and the job that Jonathan is doing, you know, is a greater job than some of the other smaller mechanics, but you know, you got, it's like since the knuckle boom went down, I mean, if we'd had sent that to Tallahassee, it would have cost us thirty thousand dollars. But Jonathan, you know, took it upon himself, being dedicated that he is, I mean, he got the job done for us.
Mr. Chairman, Fonda, is he certified, is he a certified diesel mechanic?
No, ma'am.
He needs to go for that certification.
Okay.
Because what happens is, when, and I brought this up with Michael, I don't have no problem with doing him and making him an adjustment and all, it's like the chairman said, Mr. Putnall has been in there for a long time, he's a certified diesel mechanic, and he has been privileged to the increases that we've had over the past years that he's been there, but with that being said, Jonathan really needs to go get his certification in diesel mechanics if he ever expects to jump up, and another point is, on some of the warranties that we have on our equipment, if you have anybody other than a certified diesel mechanic to work on them, your warranties are not valid, they go, I mean, it does away with it. So, I mean, it would be in our best interest and his best interest if he was to get certified. Now, we helped, Mr. Putnall was certified when he came on board, Mr. Brandon wasn't, and I think Mr. Brandon went to school with you on some stuff, didn't he?
That at Phillips, that at Jacksonville, Highway, me and him got certified down in Jacksonville.
Yeah, and so, I mean, it's easy to do, so why don't you encourage Jonathan to go after his certification, and then we'll give him this, but then later on, we can bump him up to where he really needs to be at, because he's a good mechanic.
One question real quick, are you suggesting that we pay for his schooling to go get certified?
We did, Mr. Brandon.
And what, Mr. Schuler, would you pay? If we do, if we do that, I want a commitment that he's gonna stay with the county.
Yeah.
If we pay for him to go get certified, and we've run into this in the past, paying for people to go to school, and three years later, they leave the county.
They don't.
So if we're gonna pay to help him do that, then I think that we should have some kind of mandatory amount of years that he's gotta work with the county in return for providing that education.
If not, Chairman, when he leaves, we can just take it from his salary, what he's got coming, he owes for the schooling.
Schooling.
Yeah, I would rather go the other route.
Okay.
If we're gonna send him to school, I would like to know.
Well, I'm just saying, that's a thought, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, you gotta give him a little bit of incentives to want to do better, and it's like I said, if he does, then it will be a, and I hate to say these words, because some people say them and don't mean them, it would be a win-win for Franklin County and for Jonathan, and it would help, because that's one thing that I worry about, is, and I worry about everything with the county, but, but it's, well, that's my job, but it concerns me, we need to have the best people we can in those positions, especially when you're handling diesel mechanics and diesel, diesel equipment and stuff.
So, uh.
But I'll make a motion that we go ahead and, and give the increase, that's an option, that that I suggested to you for Jonathan, that's an option that you can give him, you know, and we'll discuss this at another meeting, to where we'll get straight on what we need to do, but it's just a thought to put in his head, but I'll make a motion that we go ahead and do this for Jonathan Kelly.
We do have a motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? Mr. Schuler, I'd like to look into what we discussed about, if we send somebody to school and we pay out X amount of dollars, that I would like to have some kind of commitment from that individual, that, you know, he's gonna stay with the county for X amount of years to help offset the cost of the taxpayer dollars to send him to school.
Yes.
And as Commissioner Sanders said, it would be a win-win for him, because this is a very young.
He's young.
Compared to the rest of us sitting there, he's, you know, he's got a lot of good years left in him as far as workforce, and having that certification would be advantageous for him, but I don't want to send him to school, and next year, if he goes and finds another mechanic job, I mean, I think it was only fair that, that we do that, so, we do have a motion and a second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries.
I have one schooling in Jacksonville now, down at Philip, yeah, Caterpillar, that's where I got mine, down in Jacksonville, I don't know if they got, still got the one in Tallahassee or not.
Well, I thought you and Mr. Brandon had went to school together.
Yeah, we went to Jacksonville and got ours.
Are we talking about, just to be clear, are we talking about getting them ASE certified? Is that what?
Certified in the diesel mechanic, yeah.
Well, the ASE has a deal, because I'm under, at NAPA, they do parts men, they do regular automotive, like you have at the Chevrolet and Ford dealer, and they also do diesel, so the ASE certification is national standard.
Yeah, same way down in, yeah.
Other than just some kind of certification that, you know, this guy that owns this one shop says you know how to rebuild this, do your.
Well, see, see like Mr. Putnall, when Mr. Putnall came to workforce, he was already a certified diesel mechanic with a division of forestry, so he was automatically in there, you know.
It probably was ASE then. Fonda, I might have some stuff that could help him with that, tell him to get it with me.
Okay. Any other, any other comments on the board from Mr. Davis? Thank you, Fonda.
Mayor Christie.
Mayor Christie.
To you all from the Solid Waste, Park, RIT, and Animal Control, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next will be Mr. Pam Brownell, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Commissioners, I do not have any action items today, and my staff will be off Friday, Monday, and Tuesday for the holidays.
Do you have a Merry Christmas? Any comments from the board?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to all y'all from our staff, thank you.
Next will be Mr. Eric Lovestrand, Extension Office Director.
I don't have any action items for you this morning either, just wanted to wish you all a very Merry Christmas with your families, enjoy that time together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Merry Christmas to you, Mr. Eric.
Any comments from Mr. Eric from the board?
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Next would be Ms. Lisa Lance, Library Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you all on our side of the, of the world, it's a little intimidating, up a little closer to y'all. Do want to say thank you to a lot of people for a, for a good year for us, and a thank you to Bo May and Rob Powell with Rio Carabelle, we had a performance for a Christmas Carol was performed by Hampstead Stage on December 2nd, so we had a lot of children that were introduced to live theater, something that they had never seen, and actually got to participate, so we appreciate them for allowing us to use their venue. We also was able to finally accomplish our flag ceremony on December 7th on Pearl Harbor Day, they took a lot of, a lot of cooperation throughout the county, and appreciate all those that were participated in that, Commissioner Jones for being there and speaking, for Duke Energy who helped us determine that the pole that we wanted our light on actually wasn't a Duke Energy pole, and Mike Kates for being very quick to get us a light installed on that pole, we couldn't raise our flag that day with Tyndall Air Force Honor Guard because the weather was so bad, but we now have that flag raised, and we had a good turnout, had more than forty people present, so I appreciate all those people that came to that, and Carabelle Mayor Brenda LaPaz and her husband attended that as well, and Greg actually videoed that for us, so if anybody would like to see that, that's on the YouTube at Carabelle Florida, see for yourself, and that's S E A. Additional thanks to Mayor Brenda LaPaz, who was instrumental in finally determining a range of trees and a security light in our parking lot here at Carabelle, and for the Streets and Roads Department for getting those trees trimmed back quickly, gives us more lighting in the parking lot at night, because it's kind of dark when some of our staff leave. The library will be closed next Monday and Tuesday for Christmas, we will be closed the next Monday for New Year's, and we have our final events this week, on Thursday, we will be having the Polar Express Party at the East Point Branch, and that's the reading of the story and the viewing of the movie, and our big finale event that all kids and parents and all people enjoy is Animal Tales, the Holiday Safari will be here on Friday, and that will be at East Point at three o'clock and Carabelle at five, there's a lot of surprise animals that will appear under the Christmas tree, so we're looking forward to that. We are wanting to, we're partnering with the McCullough Extension Office for a gardening program, for the master gardening program, so we need a few more people to sign up for that, and we do have events already planned for the first part of January, so everybody needs to check our calendars and see what we have going there, but I wish y'all Merry Christmas, and I thank y'all for a good year.
Wish you a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board from Ms. Lisa? Thank you for coming in, you got something, Mike?
You know me, I always got something.
I'm a problem, Joe.
No, I kinda have my Allen in training. I don't know about either of my reports, Commissioners, the camera would prefer you on that side.
I'd rather not, I'd rather be blocked.
Ms. Lisa Lance, the Director of Library Service, informed me that the constant trips between Carabelle and East Point, sometimes multiple daily trips, is adding a lot of modesture or personal vehicle. There aren't adequate funds in the library budget to purchase a new or used vehicle, however, don't look at me the way Commissioner Jones looked at me yesterday, there is a 2004 Chevrolet Cavalier transferred to the county from the property appraiser's office that I was planning to send to auction. Ms. Lance could use this vehicle for travel within the county, I've sent this vehicle